Let me call this meeting to order. It is now 6:30. The regular scheduled board meeting for September 22nd, 2015. Determination, we do have a quorum. We do have Dr. Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramírez.
Present.
Mr. Benito Sáenz.
Present.
Mr. Ruben Sáenz.
Klein.
Klein, sorry, sorry.
We're Klein.
And Ms. Judy Solis. Present. And myself, Daniel García, as president as well. We do have a quorum. The Pledge of Allegiance. I do see a lot of the kids that were here at the General Assembly. If one of them would like to lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance. We do have a podium with a mic. If you want to come up here, Mr. Ressio. You can system setting them up. One, two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Velia.
Section three, approval of minutes. We have the regular board meeting for August 11th, 2015. The public meeting of August 25th, 2015. The special board meeting of August 25th, 2015. Do we have a motion for the approval of minutes? We have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second?
No second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Section four, the public forum. We'll move on. Section five, information and proposals from superintendent and staff. Item one, student recognition from Rio Grande City High School.
Mr. Sáenz.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo. It is my pleasure to introduce some outstanding students to you today. We have some students that this past year, they excelled in UIL, academic UIL, and I would like to introduce them at this time. Okay? On April 25th of 2015, Rio Grande City High School Literary Criticism Team won first place at the Regional Academic UIL Meet in San Antonio. In addition to being the regional championship team, champion team, the team acquired individual places. Jocelyn Sáenz was first place overall at regionals. Nayeli De La Cruz got fourth place. Marlisa Marquez got fifth place. Due to their qualification, they advanced to the Academic State Competition at Austin. The Literary Criticism scored fourth place as a team at state. Overall, the Literacy Criticism Team has been the district champion for the past three academic school years and advanced to regional and state academic competitions. Their individual and team accomplishments have set them apart academically and have prepared them for future academic endeavors. Coached by Ms. Crystal Castiano. The team is composed of Jocelyn Sáenz. She's a junior. It's interesting because they're all coming back this year.
Beautiful.
Jocelyn Sáenz, junior. Marlisa Marquez, the junior. Nayeli De La Cruz is a junior. And Sabrina Salinas, a senior. Expectations have been set, but with hard work, this year, anything is possible. Let's give these students. Devin Ramírez has participated in UIL poetry since his freshman year at high school. In ninth and 10th grade, he placed third at the district competition, which advanced him to regional competition in San Antonio. This past year, as an 11th grader, Devin was a district 31-58 district champ. He then went on to compete at the regional, where he placed second place. With hard work, commitment, and dedication, Devin excelled at the state level. After two days of competition, he placed sixth in the UIL poetry in Austin, Texas. Believed because the best is yet to come for his outstanding individual, Devin Ramírez is coached by Ms. Armentina Garza. And it is that all our state competitors will be once again back for their senior year, and we're looking forward to so many great things from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also want to recognize their coaches. Ms. Crystal Castiano. Literary Criticism. And Ms. Armentina Garza, our poetry coach. And our UIL coordinator, Dr. Usman. Will the parents of these outstanding students please stand? Want to recognize their parents at this time?
Item one, students participating in District General Assembly.
Good evening, board members. Board President, Mr. Daniel García, board members, Mr. Jorge Trigo, superintendent, and community members. At this time, we would like to recognize the students who participated in the general session for our opening day ceremony. We would like to present to them a token, a little token of appreciation for all that they did to participate in all the accomplishments that were felt on that day, and we wanted to recognize them. At this time, if I can have our board members and Mr. Trigo, superintendent, please come to the front so that you can present to them their little token of appreciation as I call their names. And students, when I call your names, if you can please come to the front and receive your token of appreciation as I call your names one by one. Okay, I would like to begin with the students who were in our program. And we will begin with introducing our Mistress of Ceremonies, Ms. Amy Herrera from Gruya High School. From Veterans Middle School, giving the invocation was done by Ms. Nara Lido Rodriguez. From Veterans Middle School, the Star Spangled Banner, the Pledge of Allegiance, and the Texas Pledge was given by Ms. Velia Marlet Canales. From the Early College High School, the welcome was given by Ms. Jennifer Dualcava. From Gruya Middle School, introducing our guest that day was Mr. Dion Osuna. From the Ace Middle School, introduction of our guest speaker was Mr. Miguela Trevino. Presently, he is at a football game. He is participating as a member of the team, so he may be late or he may be here in just a little bit after the game. From Rio Grande City High School, introduction of our UIL state medalist, Mr. Luis E. Rodríguez. From Ringo Middle School, given our benediction was by Kristen Genevieve. From Rio Grande City High School, our UIL all-state medalist, Mr. Damon Ramírez. And our guest speaker for that day from our Ace Middle School was Mr. Miguel Antonio Compián. Also assisting us on our first-day general session were our JROTC members from Rio Grande City High School under the direction of Mr. Major Rutledge, Karina Garza. Also assisting on our first-day general session opening ceremony were our JROTC members from Gruya High School under the direction of Captain Sánchez. Amy Herrera, our Mistress of Ceremonies. Oliver Barrera, color guard. Ariani Bruce, color guard. Jason Garza, color guard. And also Abigail Garza, who is not present with us today for extracurricular activities as well, but we will recognize her. Abigail Garza is also a member. Also joining us on our first-day general ceremony and providing much beautiful music was our jazz band members from Rio Grande City High School under the direction of Mr. Alfredo Cortinas, director, and Mr. Cesario Barrera, audio and logistics manager. So will Noé Morín, tenor sax, please join us? Abelino Basan, baritone sax. Noé Morín plays the tenor sax. Yesenia Reina, trumpet and vocals. Emmanuel López, lead guitar and vocals. Anthony González, electric bass and vocals. Abigail Cortinas, keyboard and vocals. And Leonardo Garza, drum set. Would all the parents of these students please stand to be recognized? Once again, students, thank you for an outstanding job. You did a very good job on that first day in our general session. We will take a picture now with our board members and our superintendent of schools.
I wanted to mention that you all can go to our website, the RGCC ISD website, either on Facebook or on the web, and you can hear a lot of the general assembly. I think most of you who weren't there will be very, very impressed with our students. We have Devin Ramírez with his beautiful renditions of his poems, Velia Canales singing the heck out of the National Anthem, and the one who stole the show that day, Mr. Little Mikey Compián, our guest speaker. So if you have a chance, go out there and look at it. It is tremendous.
Yes. Again, thank you, Mr. Sáenz and Dr. Trevino. Item two, consider and take possible action on proclamation declaring the month of September 2015 National Attendance Awareness Month.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Trigo, ladies and gentlemen. This evening, we would like to come before you and ask the Board of Education to proclaim September National Attendance Month. It's a campaign going around nationally, and we would like to have that proclamation. So if you may, Ms. Solis.
Yes, thank you.
We have student representatives from the campuses, so that's very nice.
Excellent, excellent.
Following the proclamation, we're going to have our students recite a pledge of attendance.
Yes.
And then we have two high school students also, and then we have a parent pledging also.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, then, whereas good attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, and we are committed to dedicating our resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism rates with a focus starting as early as pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. Whereas chronic absence, missing 10% or more of school for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences, or just two of three days a month, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. Whereas improving attendance and reducing chronic absence takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particular challenges and strengths in each community. And whereas chronic absence predicts lower third-grade reading proficiency, course failure, and eventual dropout, it weakens our communities and our local economy. Whereas the impact of chronic absence hits low-income students and children of color particularly hard if they don't have the resources to make up for lost time in the classroom and are more likely to face systematic barriers to getting to school, such as unreliable transportation, lack of access to health care, unstable or unaffordable housing. Whereas attendance gaps among groups of students often turn into achievement gaps that undermine student success. Chronic absence particularly exacerbates the achievement gap that separates low-income students from their peers, since students from low-income families are both more likely to be chronically absent and more likely to be affected academically by missing school. And whereas absenteeism also undermines efforts to improve struggling schools, since it's hard to measure improvement in classroom instruction if students are not in class to benefit from them. And whereas schools and community partners can reach out more frequently to absent students to determine what barriers they face to attending school and what would help them attend more regularly. And whereas health care providers can share the importance of school attendance with families and can offer proactive preventive care to reduce absences. And whereas schools and districts must do more to track, calculate, and share the data on how many students are chronically absent so that we can see the attendance gaps and can deliver the right interventions to the right students. And whereas all students, even those who show up regularly, are affected by chronic absence because teachers must spend time reviewing for those students who missed lessons. And whereas chronic absence can be significantly reduced when schools, families, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education for Rio Grande City CISD, we proclaim our school district will stand with the nation in recognizing September as Attendance Awareness Month. We hereby commit to focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism to give all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Passed on this the 22nd day of September 2015, and I'll pass it to Mr. Daniel García for his signature. Thank you.
Student pledge. I, Sarah Martínez, pledge to attend school all day of every week that school is in session. I believe that attending school will make me successful, achieve high scores on weekly and state exams. With this in mind, I can become anything my dreams aspire. As a student of RGCC ISD, I will be responsible for attending school and attaining perfect attendance. I will not let my peers, teachers, parents, or community down because I am prepared to best school. I pledge to do my best every school day.
And if we want to be ultra-formal about it, are we going to take action on the item? I think so.
I guess we can move.
Yes.
To approve the resolution. Approve this resolution.
As stated.
Do we have a motion?
I so move.
We have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And guys, thank you so much for taking that pledge.
It is statistically proven that when students improve their attendance rates, they improve their academic prospects and chances for graduating. Nowadays, the average student misses about 126 days from pre-kinders through 12th grade. This is about 70% of one school year alone. Keep in mind that this is the average student as opposed to those students who deal with chronic absences. Test scores have dropped, and attendance has played a big part in this issue. In fact, most of the students who deal with chronic absence don't even finish high school. Chronic or consistent absence is one of the leading factors of lower test scores. Not being physically present in a classroom frequently can lead to a student representing lower academic performances, especially for those students at an early college high school. Attendance is crucial in order for one to excel academically. Students who represent higher test scores also represent the best attendance rates. This means that attendance plays a big role in order for individuals to perform well on tests and assignments. Unfortunately, there are those students who do poorly on tests yet still uphold a satisfactory attendance record. This is because most states don't look at the correct data to improve school attendance. They track the amount of students present each day and the amount of students skipping school. They track the amount of students present each day and the amount of students skipping school without an excuse. They, however, disregard the amount of students that are missing so many days in excused and unexcused absences that they are completely headed off-track academically. This is the cause that triggers the domino effect that leaves us asking ourselves this question. Why are test scores so low, and how can we improve them? The answer is simple. As we all know, attendance plays a major role in a student's academic performance. One mustn't be absent many days before obviously falling behind. This leads to lower GPAs, fewer college acceptance letters, and less applicable jobs. How can this take a detour in the right direction, you might ask? Well, attendance is bound to improve when schools engage not only the students but the parents as well, in positive ways. When parents are more involved with their child's education, students are proven to do remarkably well. If today's parents were to set goals for their children and only release them from school when it is necessary, their children would perform much more well when it came to receiving a good education. Low-income students are proven to be the individuals with the highest percentage of low-attendance rates. This can also be put to an end by providing mentors for these chronically absent students. This will not only give them the opportunity to retain more information, but it will also allow them to catch up on what they missed out on the day before. Attendance is a big problem, but with the right ideas and perspectives, every student of RGCC ISD will be provided an equal opportunity to let their imagination soar and their education prosper. Thank you.
Thank you.
School. Anonymous author. School is something we must all embrace, knowledge we need to seek out and to chase. Subjects and teacher styles are plentiful and vary, just like the backpacks we all carry. Sports, clubs, and activities at every single turn. So much to do, study, and to learn. To get the most from school, we should consistently attend. Around each corner, there is always a friend. Our favorite teachers are friendly and very kind. Their passion and job to expand every mind. School is something we must all embrace. Attendance we need to reach the dreams that we chase. Thank you.
I, Dalinda Vera, am giving the parent pledge. I, Dalinda Vera, pledge to send my daughter, Casey Vera, to school every day of every week that school is in session because I know the importance of an education. With an education, I see my child achieve high goals in life because I believe in that with an education, all dreams are possible. I understand that attending school is vital in the education that our district teachers deliver to our students. Therefore, I agree to monitor my child's daily attendance and collaborate with teachers and administrators. I pledge to be cooperative and encourage my daughter, Casey Veda, to be the best student each and every day. Thank you.
Wow, nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Office of Attendance and Truancy would like to thank the school board, Mr. Trigo, and all the students here, of course, for believing and pledging for attendance. The parents that are present, parents, if you are here, please stand. Of these wonderful students from RGCC ISD. The campuses have done an outstanding job the first four weeks of school. The Office of Attendance and Truancy have been monitoring attendance on a weekly, daily, weekly, and this first month. And we're very happy and excited to say that based on this year's attendance rates were higher than last year's. So it's very positive. So congratulations, students, for doing an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Mr. Trigo and I had the privilege of visiting one of the elementary campuses today, and as we walked in, you know, the students were excited. And Mr. Trigo asked them, you know, what was going on, how was their learning going, and what was, you know, why were they so excited? They said, "Well, first grade, we're in first place this, today," sir.
Yes, that's right. It was very nice.
So you can see all that positivity is going around it at the campuses and reaching to every student, and we're very excited. This pledge was sent to every campus so that every student could send, you know, send it home and get the parents and community support. And there's a lot of other initiatives. You know, Mr. Garcia, Jorge Garcia, and Alex Rodriguez are doing an outstanding job. They're out in the communities every single day, out at the schools. We visit campuses every day, you know, throughout the week. So we do take reports. We meet, they meet with parents a lot, daily, and we're working with the families. Our goal is to reach out to all of these students that need the help and assistance and make sure that they have, you know, our assistance as well as community support. They might not have the answers, but we try to find the answers to the solutions that they're having. So we would like to thank the school board and Mr. Trigo for your support throughout this endeavor, and attendance will go up this school year.
Thank you, Mr. Peña.
Wow, thank you.
And we really appreciate being kept abreast every week of the counts. That's invaluable information. Whatever we can do as a board, we're here also. Thank you.
Thank you. I know the campuses are competing weekly for the best attendance. We have trophies. And we have posters that we place at every elementary school where they're keeping track. And I tell principals, place it where the parents go sign their students in and out and place it in the cafeteria so students see it every day, parents get to see it, and they see the importance of it. So thank you for helping us with these initiatives. We're still working on other initiatives throughout in the community to make our students, you know, benefit from all these initiatives. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Doing the picture? I'll take another picture.
Mr. Peña. And on behalf of the board, we'd like to wish you a happy birthday. And thank you for the presentation.
If we had better voices, we would sing Las Mañanitas, but they asked us not to. Where's Belia?
Item three, consider and take possible action on travel request forms from Gruia High School and Rio Grande City High School.
Mr. Board President, Mr. Garcia, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, superintendent of schools, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. Item three, the Gruia High School ROTC teachers and students attended a Corps Cadets, Junior Cadet Association Program at College Station. This has already happened. They're back. They went and came back. It's a little late because we, I believe we had rescheduled the board meeting on this particular month. So they've attended, I believe it was on the 17th through the 19th of September. Everything good? Anybody have any questions on it?
Okay. No, it's not.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion, item three? Do we have a, we have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities, Rio High School gym for the Rio Grande Valley Vipers.
Attaching the request from the Rio Grande City, Rio Grande Valley Vipers for the use of the high school gym on October the 3rd. Custodian and security service will be charged for the use, and they have their liability insurance, and they have, they've been provided all that. We're requesting approval for the request.
Do we have any discussion, item four? Do we have a motion, item four?
I move that we approve.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five.
Mr. Chairman. Before we go, did we take care of, when we approved the one trip, was that, did I, that apply to all trips?
Yes. I called it as Gruia and Rio High School.
You did discuss by item three.
Yes.
You, I think the motion was to approve item three, which would include all of them.
Yes.
Did you have something you wanted?
Yes, I had some questions on some of them. I thought it was just one item. I'm sorry. Is it too late to ask?
Can we go back?
You can ask.
May I, or?
Yes.
We also have a group of students on three going to a track meet, if that's what you want to address. And we also have the band students also going on a trip, travel request.
Just an observation on what was presented to us, and I think that for future reference, that should be looked at. The, the particular trip of the ROTC has already happened, and I just wish that we would not get items to approve of things that have already happened. On that same sheet on the bottom, it says there that they're supposed to be submitted one month prior to attending a meeting if it's outside Region 1, and that one was outside Region 1. And it says one month in advance, and here it is. It's already happened, and we're just now approving it. So just so, Mr. Vez, you caution the people who are involved not to send them, not to send it to us after the fact.
Yes, sir.
And then make sure that all the information is correct. I pointed out some areas there that I felt were not totally accurate.
I made contact this morning with Ms. Garza at the high school in Gruia. We've talked about it. We discussed it. It'll be corrected, and you should not use again.
Thank you.
Well, just so you know, it says there that scholarship will be awarded, and according to the info attached here, it says they become eligible to participate, to compete for, eligible to compete for scholarships, although the paragraph at the beginning says that they will be awarded scholarships, okay? So I think that that was not accurate, and so we have to be careful, all right? The, the item submitted for the Corpus Christi trip does not have lodging, and so we should not accept. Whoever accepts these things, it doesn't include lodging, and yet the trip includes an overnight trip. And so if it's not there, I think that that should not come to our, for our approval unless it's complete. That was on page 44. If you will look at it, you'll notice that it's not there.
That particular page and that particular request on that trip, Mr. Science, has been canceled.
Has been canceled, okay.
They will not be attending that particular trip. On the other one.
On page 47, it's a trip to Houston by the same group, and again, lodging is not included, and it's an overnight stay. And again, it should be submitted one month prior to, this is October 2nd, so it's less than a month from now. Just so remind them that they should not be submitting this late. And on page 49, the band trip, has absolutely nothing on lodging, on mileage, on airfare, I mean, excuse me, on meals total. And I know it says they're all expenses paid by activity fund, but we're still responsible for monies that are accepted by the school. And so on this particular one has no expenses listed, no itinerary. And if you'll notice on page 50, there's a list of 45 students, and the trip says they're gonna take 145 students. And so, I mean, again, whoever receives these need to be scrutinizing them very carefully before they come before us for approval. I have no problem with trips, you know, for students. They really enhance their education. But we need to have the proper paperwork so that we can approve them.
We, we've made contact with the high school. I personally did. I also talked to the director of Fine Arts, Mr. Livas, which is here today. And we also included the band director. He did submit today, kind of late in the day, a revised copy, and you have something up to date there. But again, you're correct, it's late. We lack a little bit in that department. I don't know, Roger, you'd like to, are you, are you here, Roger? Would you like to, real quick?
When, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo. When Mr. Varela and the high school turned in that travel request, they were under the assumption that since the students were raising the money, they didn't put any of the totals. We apologize for that. I made him aware of that yesterday. He worked all day yesterday, yesterday and this morning and today, getting those figures for the lodging, for the meals, and for everything. And we submitted that to Mr. Arrecio, and I think that he provided a copy.
I have a copy of it. It says that the whole trip is gonna cost $24,400.
Yes, sir.
And I also asked, inquired about where the money's coming from. It said from the activity fund.
Yes, sir.
And I also heard that the activity funds has only about $10,000.
I, that, I have no knowledge of that, but I know that he's raising money. They're raising money. They're having fundraisers, and they will, their goal is to raise all of that money by the, by the, the end of next month.
By the end of next week?
The next month, by the end of next month when the trip happens.
Next month, oh, okay. And when's it, the trip is the 30th of October?
Yes, sir, of October, yes.
So they will have it by then?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's what Mr. Varela has told me.
Okay. That should be stated in all the work that we have here. Thank you, Mr. Livas.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Varela. I mean, sorry, Mr. Livas. Item five, consider and take possible action on candidates for Veterans Memorial Wall at Veterans Middle School.
Rio Grande City CID Veterans Middle School have a memorial wall project in place. It's receiving requests for permission to continue with to place and engrave additional veterans, names to be added to the memorial wall. They are, these are commonly names from the district, within our district that participate in serving the military. We went, we went through the committee process, and we discussed it, and basically, the initial cost to start this project is $250 to get it going. We have, we have a list. Okay. I believe you have a list there. I believe we have 12 individuals from the community that are veterans, and we are requesting for your approval to continue with this project and work with a new committee on the criteria to continue with this memorial wall.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to first commend the idea of having to honor veterans. The, is it called Veterans Memorial Wall?
That's what I understand it is, yes, sir.
Okay. So that should be in memory of the people, right? But I understand that some names there are people who are not, who are already on the wall, have not, did not pass away. They're still alive, in other words. And that some of the names on this new list also are people who are still alive. I have no problem with that. We want to recognize it, but I think we ought to establish criteria. If one does not exist, that we ought to have criteria as to how, how we're gonna accept this if it's gonna be a memorial wall, or is it just gonna be a wall to honor all veterans, in which case then it's open to anybody who served? And then if we could have a committee, if the criteria is not set, maybe a, that committee can come up with, with good criteria for it, and that way it's all open, if it's going to be open to everybody. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. I agree with that, and that's what we want, just permission to move on, move forward, and get this thing going, and revisit this every year, once a year. We have a Veterans Day every year. I think it's something very good for the community. It ties in with the district, and it's very special. There's a lot of people that work within the district that are involved, and are veterans also.
That is right.
So if you see that list there, several people are with the district now on that list. So if you would allow us the authority to move with the project, we'll come back to the committee and with the criteria. and with the criteria and several options on how we can improve the program.
Mr. Arrecio, but is it limited to only those who have served and then also worked for the district? Or any person from Regran City who served? Just from the school district?
Yeah, this, this project, Mr. Solis, goes back to two thousand and seven, so it, yeah. So supposedly it was back then, and we just picked it up a couple of months ago.
So it's veterans from, from within the community?
Yes.
Who served?
Yes.
Okay, and where can we submit names, because I know.
We have a list at the business office.
Okay, so I can call?
And, 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 as currently we are, we're suggesting that we continue as first come, first served.
Okay.
And then go with this, and then bring in some recommendations to improve this, and make it a full-fledged project.
And you said the cost is two hundred and fifty dollars per name?
No, two hundred and fifty dollars to the district to start the list of names, like for example, on this one, we have twelve applicants. It would be two hundred and fifty dollars to start with the first name, the rest of the names or individuals, they'll charge you a dollar seventy-five per letter. Which, for example, my Jorge Arrecio's got ten letters, it would be seventeen fifty. So it, you know, per, per veteran, per letter. One seventy-five, dollar seventy-five per letter, times the X amount of letters you have in your name. So it's pretty affordable, it's pretty good. It's just the initial cost to get going, to get the materials, to get, and the one that did this work is the one that will do the work, and that's Noel Garcia. The one that does the monuments and stuff like that, and he's been involved with me, and also Joel Science from the Student Service, which is a veteran and worked with the district also. We're trying to just pick this up and get it back together to where it was.
It's a beautiful idea, it sounds like a beautiful project, and Veterans Day is coming up in November, I'd love to see a ceremony and.
We're hoping that we can have it by then, if we move on it.
Yes.
Sure.
At least with this group, and then we'll, we'll improve it, I promise you that.
It would be beautiful to invite their family members and whatnot. It's great, it's a great idea. But definitely, I think criteria is important, because in memory is one thing, and in honor is another, absolutely.
That's right.
I move for its approval.
Do we have a, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on donations to RGCCISD.
We have a list of donations here, would you like me to go over each one, or?
I will, we'll correct.
Just because of the length of the agenda today, we can do we have a copy of the people that donated, and again, Mr. Arrecio, we can send them a thank you letter.
We will.
And if there's any other discussion, do we have a motion, item six?
I shall move.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on agreement with Stark County Juvenile Probation Department for a progressive sanctioning, sanction officer.
The district has had an agreement with the Stark County Juvenile Probation Department for some time now. I think it goes back to all the way in ninety-nine, ninety-seven, somewhere back there. It's a tri-county judicial district juvenile probation department for a progressive sanction officer. The cost for the service was in the amount of twenty thousand seven hundred dollars. This went to committee, it was discussed extensively and looked into. At that time, after some discovery and looking into this particular service, the committee decided that, and after discussing it with principals, particularly the two high school principals, and also discussing it with the deans that got involved with the students that are, you know, involved with the probation office, it was decided the district take a different direction, and that we had other projects in place and priorities. So at this time, the administration is not recommending. It's.
I'm sorry, which committee did it go through? Was that Finance or?
Yes, ma'am, Finance. I thought you all had a copy of this.
I did, and I had reviewed it, and I saw that, I used, I used to work closely with juvenile probation, so I'm wondering, what, if I could, what will be in his place, or what actions will we take in his place?
We'll have, well, we're having, right now, it's a good example with this truancy program that we have in place for students that have been out. That was one of the big issues, that people don't come to school. It's unbelievable with what's happening with this. You know, it's, it's, it's very approachable, and it's up-to-date, current, competitive. This is the first time we do the truancy thing. My hats off to Superintendent and, of course, Mr. Peña with this, with the results that we have had so far. So based on the services that, and we went back, I talked to Mr. Science. I, which, which is there, and I talked to Mr. Peña, he was principal for there for five years. And for the amount, because you pay a salary and you pay benefits, they felt that, at that time, that it was not cost-effective. That's basically the approach, and that's what the, the decision was rendered at the time.
Okay, I know that they work closely also with the Alternative Center, with Shirozuna, and I know that one of the things that they also do is drug testing, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that, and that we have alternatives to secure those sort of services.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion on item seven?
How do we do, to approve, for not approval, okay?
No, just for, approve the recommendation.
Okay, I move that we approve the recommendation, not to approve the position.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Cantú. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion.
This time I'm gonna, I'm gonna oppose, just because I don't have enough information, I'm a little wary, but.
We do have a, an A.
An A.
An A, that was Ms. Solis. Motion. Two A's, I mean, Dr., I mean, Mr. Dicky Gonzalez, two A's, and motion carries on item seven, by majority vote. Item eight, consider and take possible action on refunding of bond twenty fifteen.
Dr. Miguel De Los Santos, our financial advisor, has presented a refunding opportunity to the district through the committee, Finance Committee, on the current bond issue, through the Finance Committee, see the attach, we have the attachments, which you have there now. Mr. De Los Santos, Dr. De Los Santos is here with us today, and.
Thank you, Mr. Arrecio. Mr. President, members of the board, Ms. Trigo, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. What you have, you had it as part of your package in item eight, but I had run some pretty versions, if you will, color versions, so I believe Oney just passed them out. The, the gist of this particular presentation is on page four. That is where the first three or four pages are about our firm. The page four is what we're here about. What happens is that in two thousand and six, the district sold some bonds, or issued, borrowed some money, if you will. And in two thousand and six, if you look at page four, and if you look at four lines from the bottom up, the bonds were financed at an average of four point seven six eight percent. The interest rates today, ten years later, almost ten years later, have come down considerably, and if you look at the next line following that, where it says true interest cost, the average interest cost to refinance these bonds would be about three point five oh six. So the fact that the, that the market has changed considerably in the favor of issuers, or in the favor of borrowers, has a major impact on the district today. If you look at, on that page, if you look at the second line, which says paramount of refunding bonds, twenty-nine million nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That is what your new loan is going to be for if you do this deal. The paramount of refunded bonds is a little bit higher, it's thirty-one million, and the reason it's a little bit higher is because you will get more if you do this transaction in, in in the, the bond investors will give you more, if a bond is worth one dollar, they'll give you a dollar and a nickel, or a dollar and three cents, or whatever. So you have a premium, is what it's called in the business. So you'll get a little bit more, and from that is what you end up paying off your bond expenses and, and costs that come with the issuance. But the darkened part there, the shadow part there, where it says net present value savings, that is in today's dollars, not taking into account inflation, which is for the next twenty years, because these bonds are amortized for the next twenty years. If the district does the transaction, you would in essence save, with today's dollars, it could fluctuate a little bit depending on what the market is, whenever we do go to market, if you approve the deal, would be approximately two point eight million dollars. The percent of savings of refunded bonds, right below that, it says nine point one four four. What that means is that if the board does not do this transaction, and you continue to pay on these bonds for the next twenty years, the way that you're paying right now, you will in effect have paid nine point one four four percent more than you had to have paid. Or that would be exactly what you will save. Or according to the numbers that we ran on this deal, the reason I say, because the numbers can change if we do this transaction the next thirty, forty, fifty days. And then the final, the, the average annual savings would be a hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars per year. Now, the next two pages have, this is a summary of the next two pages. The next two pages, the next one has the amortization, the twenty years, and what we're looking at is by maturities, every year is a maturity, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. By maturities, you will see on the second column what the existing coupon is, that is the existing, the interest rate that you're paying on the loan that you have right now. For example, the payment on eight fifteen seventeen would be four percent, at four percent. If you do a transaction, that four percent would be reduced to point eighty-four percent, which would be less than one percent for the, for that line of bonds. The next one is four point one right now, it would go down to one point fifteen percent. So in the end, when you have the average, that's what I talked about earlier, if you average all of the second column, you come up with four point seven six eight approximately, and if you average all of the, next to the last column, you come out with three point five oh six. That's what we're talking about, the lower interest rate by year. And then the, the next page is a savings summary, and now we're talking about the same information, except that now we're talking about actual dollars. You look at column number two, that is what your payment is, if you could keep the loan that you have right now. If you look at column number three, that's your new payment, if you do the transaction. And if you look at column number four, which is a shaded column, that is the savings for each of those particular years throughout. And in the end, at the very bottom, you have three point nine three six, that's three million nine hundred and thirty-six thousand savings in future value savings, that is in continued payments as you're making them. Taking, not taking into consideration inflation, so you would save future value nine point, three point nine three six, and in present value savings, the bottom, two point eight three five. So the opportunity for the district to save some money is here. Should the board approve, what you would be approving tonight would be, we call this the plan of finance, you know, the, the projected savings that you stand to make. There are three other items that you would be looking at. The next one would be item number nine, which is an order authorizing a financial advisor, bond attorneys, to proceed with the board president, and the superintendent, the business manager, and, and with all the paperwork necessary, and to keep an eye on the market, and then pull the trigger whenever the situation is good. The interest rate is, is in the best interest of the school district. And then item number ten would be bond counsel, and then item number eleven, I can address it this time, or, you know, you can take the one. Happy to answer any questions.
Let me just get a, any discussion on item eight? Do we have a motion on item eight? We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on an order authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of Regran City CISD Unlimited Refunds Bonds Series twenty fifteen, setting certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing a pricing officer to approve the terms thereof, levying a tax providing for the security and payment of such bonds, and enacting other provisions relating thereto. You've already discussed it.
Well, this is, this is prepared by your, by bond counsel, it's not prepared by us, but what it says is that if the board takes action on this, you're in essence authorizing the board president, superintendent, business manager to work with a financial advisor and bond counsel, and pull the trigger on a transaction when, when the savings are there that we're expecting to save. That, in other words, we don't price and then call a special board meeting to come and say, hey, we need to, we need to call a meeting right now to, to get this deal. You're authorizing these individuals to act on behalf of the board.
Okay. Have any discussion on item nine? We have a motion, an item, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Cantú. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item ten, consider and take possible action on engaging the Ricardo Perez, I know it says Lopez, but it should be Perez Law Firm, P L L C, to serve as bond counsel for the Regran City Consolidated Independent School District. That's self-explanatory. Do we have a, any discussion on item ten? Do we have a motion on item ten?
Shall move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eleven, consider and take possible action on approval of underwriters for Series twenty fifteen bonds, unlimited tax school refunding bonds.
Mr. President, on that one, the underwriters are the firms that will in essence facilitate the funds for you. They're the people that actually make sure that you get the money, and they get the investors for you. If they don't get the investors for you, they're the ones that write you a check to make sure that the deal is consumed. There are, we usually recommend to the boards, the firms that express an interest in the transaction. There are three firms who have, that have expressed an interest in the transaction. That would be RBC Capital Markets, Stevens Incorporated, Stifel Nicolaus and Company, and they're all very strong banks. Any one of these banks could do a transaction for you. Unless the board has another preference, or a preference, a different preference, our recommendation, and the only reason that I put it in this order, would be RBC Capital Markets, a senior manager. The last transaction that you did, they were the senior manager, they did a very good job for you. Stevens Incorporated, we have done some transactions with them also, they're very strong. And Stifel Nicolaus and Company, also a very strong firm. So either that way, or we can assort them any way you want, or include other firms if you wish.
I just, I have one question. What is that number, that print, that percentage?
The percentage means that if the bonds that they're selling is thirty, thirty-five million, or what, thirty-six million, that they're breaking the liability. The, the top firm will take forty percent liability, the next one thirty percent, the next one thirty percent. They're responsible for selling that amount of bonds. If any of them don't sell it, they have to take them into their own inventories, and then deal with them later. If the market goes away, they have to eat that, they have to write you a check for that.
Got it.
So that, those are liabilities.
Thank you.
And do we have a motion, item eleven?
I shall move, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. De Los Santos. Item twelve, consider and take possible action on TASB Risk Management Participation Agreement for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year.
RGCCISD participates in the TASB Risk Management Unemployment Compensation Program for reporting unemployment compensation. In essence, we are self-funded, as opposed to paying a flat tax rate as other employees do. Our contribution is based on claims paid on our account. This agreement automatically renews each year, however, we are requesting your approval. And I'd like to make a comment on this one, if I may, Mr. Arrecio?
Yes.
This program is working really good. You don't have the numbers, but we were looking at it today, I was met a little bit with Mr. Science, and I was showing him, disclosing him. Back in two thousand and eleven, we were paying close to a quarter million dollars in claims. And then it's gotten better, it's gone down from a quarter million to, in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, to a hundred and forty-five thousand. And as of this projected next year, it's gonna go from one forty-five to seventy-nine thousand. So it's, we're doing something right. I think it behooves us to, to jump on this and continue doing a good work. Lot of discipline, lot of control, lot of structure. We recommend approval for the program.
Any discussion on item twelve?
Mr. Arrecio, as far as we, as far as we know, this is the only organization that does this.
Yes, yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion, item twelve? We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Motion, we checked that out. I motion, we get that checked out.
Thank you, Robert and Joe. Thank you for turning it on.
Item thirteen, discussion on possible action on authorizing the superintendent to extend electricity services with T A S B and direct energy.
T A S B Energy Corporation has contracted the district to negotiate a price for energy on existing contracts by extending an additional twelve months. We are requesting to give the superintendent the ability to negotiate a rate, uh, which should be less than our current rate, uh, per kilowatt. Uh, basically, right now, we're paying zero point zero five six four four. Uh, there is actually, it's a coincidence, but, uh, we have the T A S B representative here today, is Mr. Magallanes. Uh, and he has submitted me a quote today. I didn't expect the quote, but it's almost a whole penny below, it's at a four point zero four six four four, or something like that. And I have a copy of it, it's unbelievable. Uh, prices are dipping, and if you were to take on something like this, I would recommend highly that we approve the opportunity to act on it, because you could save a quarter million dollars, not this year, but in forthcoming years, with the savings just on the light bill, for all the schools together. Of course, except Medina, but, uh, all the other schools are tied into direct energy. And, uh, it, there's quite a bit of savings opportunity. On last Thursday, I believe that the feds announced, uh, that interest rates were going to stay flat, at least till the end of this year. So right now, it's an opportunity for us to have a little bit of, uh, uh, opportunity to be able to move on this. If there's another dip, we would like permission to have the authority to, to lock in at least one more year with these rates. Because I, we think, we believe, uh, according to also the Dr. Lo Santos, which is our financial advisor, that this thing is probably start to jump up, and go back up slowly. So there's opportunity here, all we're asking for is permission to act. If it doesn't dip, we don't do anything with it, but, uh, we'd like to be ready and to react to this.
And Mr. Maga, Mr. Magallanes, the, the, the figure that we have here, zero point zero four six four four, is that, uh, what we would be looking at right now if we were to go with it?
Yes, sir, this is indicative pricing, and as indicative pricing, it's, it's always fluctuating due to the market. Uh, currently today, yes, this is the pricing you will get, uh, but it's, it's, it's on the, on the market, on the natural gas market, actually, that drives electricity. Uh, so that's what we'll be monitoring on a daily basis, until your administration feels comfortable, uh, with the substantial savings you could obtain from this.
And Mr. Garcia, a, according to this thing, there's, the, the, if we go with that, the savings would be a quarter of a million for this year?
That, that would be actually for twenty eighteen through twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Yes.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
Yes. We typically don't, don't look at, at contracts as far, uh, ahead of time, but, um, T A S B is, is not a proper organization, so whenever there's opportunity to look at potential savings like this, we want to present you with these opportunities, uh, for y'all to act on it.
And it is T A S B approved, though?
Yes.
Mr. Science, I'd just like to add that our bill for the year on light is around four million dollars.
I know, I saw that.
Turn the air conditioner back off, never mind.
Turn off the air conditioner. Get some candles or something.
A fan? That's expensive.
Do you, any more discussion on item thirteen?
I move that we have item thirteen as presented.
Do we have a motion, Mr. Gonzalez, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Science, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, consider and take possible action on acquisitions and financing of instruments for the R G C C I S D Fine Arts Department. Thank you, Mr. Magallanes.
Riverland City C I D Fine Arts, uh, Department is in need of the instruments for the band program. We have gone through committee on this, on the finance committee, uh, and have been approved, uh, and recommended through the committee. Uh, the only thing we're asking for is, we could see, we could get a better rate, uh, for the financing, uh, on the instrument. Uh, and that we did, we, we came, I believe, from a five percent, uh, to a three point, uh, one eight seven. And it has more savings, better rate, good, uh, terms, and we recommend that you approve it for the band. Uh, this is, everybody will, uh, be pretty happy with this one, as far as the instrument is concerned.
Do we have any discussion on item fourteen? Do we have a motion on item fourteen?
I so move to approve item fourteen as presented.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantu, uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on resolution with Government Capital Corporation for financing.
Basically, basically, this, Mr. Garcia, is just the resolution to follow up and, uh, and, uh, work with this project, and this, uh, purchase. And, and you have, I think, a, a revised copy there, uh, that's, uh, was given out. Uh, and basically, it's just, uh, to recommend the approval of the resolution, uh, from Government Capital Corporation.
Any discussion on item fifteen? Do we have a motion on item fifteen?
I move we approve item fifteen as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on tax refund for the month of August twenty fifteen.
Presented is the request for the pool of tax refund for fifteen, refunds totaling, um, six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five and forty-three cents being requested. The administration recommends approval.
Have any discussion on item sixteen? We have a motion on item sixteen? We have a motion by Mr. Klein, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on requisitions, five thousand and over, in a twelve-month aggregate.
This is the, uh, the list, if you want us to go over it, man.
I know there is a, an addition, is that correct, Mr. Smithy? Yeah, yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, ladies and gentlemen. We do have requisitions, um, over five thousand dollars in a twelve-month aggregate, aggregate, starting in, on page, uh, one hundred and six. Uh, there is proper funding available for all of these requisitions. I did, uh, pass a handout if, uh, for your consideration. Um, there, there's some more requisitions that have come in, uh, since the agenda was, uh, first approved, and, and I know the, the meetings have, uh, that, uh, have been changed, the, the deadline, the, the date of the meeting, but we do have some more, uh, for you to consider, if, if you would. And there is proper funding for all of these, as well.
Is there any discussion on item seventeen?
I move for its adoption.
We have a motion on item seventeen, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eighteen, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bids. Now, I, I asked this before, can we do them as a group, or do I have to do one at a time?
I, just an observation, though.
So I can read all of them as a group?
I mean, I want to state what you're.
Yeah.
Can I?
If you will, uh, if you will turn to page, oh, one thirteen, and one fourteen, and, or just, just to summarize, it, it's just that the way this stated is a little bit misleading. I know that these are material, uh, equipment, and, and supplies, and clothing, and so on, that our teams need. But in this particular one, what's here, that we're asked to approve, there are ten orders of shoes, of fifty each, fifty shoes, three, three pairs of shoes, ten orders of that. There's eleven orders of socks, of fifty pairs of socks each. And there's ten orders of knee pads, of fifty each. And, uh, I did inquire about it already, and the only thing is, this is not exactly what, what they had in mind. They're just saying that they're submitting this, because, uh, when you submit it like this, it's likely that we will get a better bid for it. But that the actual numbers that they're going to buy would be much considerably, considerably less. And I'm wondering, if we approve this, are we, uh, committing ourselves to this?
I think it depends on what the, the bid and the contract says, I'm not sure what either of them say. Which one is it specifically, what number?
Well, it starts on page, uh, one, uh, one thirteen. All the items from one, uh, it goes all the way to, to page one fifteen. It just, ju, again, because of the numbers, that's what I'm saying, the number, they're, they're saying, they're ordering fifty pairs of shoes, fi, ten times.
Right.
They're ordering, um, ele, uh, fifty pairs of socks, eleven times, and fifty pairs of knee pads, ten times, or eleven times, I'm not sure. And, and my question is, why do we need so many? Uh, this is for one team, one school, and, but the clarification was that, well, they, they, they do these numbers, for the purposes of, uh, getting a better bid, but when we order actually our list, the actual numbers that they need. And my question is, if we, if we approve it like this, are we committing ourselves to this, or can they order less?
Okay. My, my answer would be, I think it depends on what the bid documents say and the contract that we signed say, but perhaps there's some clarification from the athletic director.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, that, that, you know, basically is just a wish list. Um, I'm not sure exactly which one you're referring to, but I believe that, um, I think, you know, like, like I told Mr. Garcia, that the coaches are allowed only a certain amount, uh, budget. Uh, so with that amount, they're only allowed to purchase what, you know, of course, they can buy with that amount. Uh, if they request, uh, like you mentioned earlier, tw, fifty pair of shoes, obviously, I mean, we do have fifty kids in the program, but, you know, uh, based on whatever budget they have, they're, uh, able to purchase maybe twenty, uh, for the varsity and whatever is, uh, of course, I picked up from the previous years, it gets passed down or reissued, uh, for the sub varsities. Uh, but yes, uh, that, that is correct, that is just a wish list, that doesn't mean they're going to, we're going to purchase all fifty times. I don't, I, I think there might be a typo times ten, uh, we don't have that many kids in one particular program, uh, besides football. Uh, but, uh, like, for example, I believe volleyball might be an issue, uh, where the coach might have, uh, so, you know, submitted for fifty pairs of shoes. Uh, but that is just a wish list, like I said, and, uh, we only purchase what is allowed, you know, based on our budget.
Okay, and, and, uh, like, I know we, we need to equip our, our teams, and I have no problem with that, I just, I was surprised with so many orders here listed. Is it possible that, on the bottom, maybe, uh, a note could be added, that this is a wish list, but that, that the actual numbers that are going to be needed will be ordered? Perhaps we can, that way, it clarifies, at least for me, anyway.
Yes, then we'll definitely, you know, be more careful as far as how, how much has been requested. Obviously, if we don't have fifty times, like you mentioned, I think ten, obviously, we're not going to be, you know, we'll correct it.
All right, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Thank you for the clarification.
And Mr. Science, if it would make you feel more comfortable, maybe you could make a motion that, um, approves it, subject to those stipulations that they only order what is needed.
What's needed, within the budget that they have.
Right, that's just a suggestion.
Okay.
Or maybe, or maybe review those specific contracts, right? Or maybe review those specific contracts themselves.
Okay, so, and, and the same thing applies for all of them, you know, they just, I know they have, they submitted what, what they think is, um, to get the best bid, and then they'll just order what they need and what's within their budget, so, I'm satisfied with that, okay?
All right, and let me read them out, item eighteen, fifteen thirty-four, fifteen thirty-five, fifteen thirty-six, fifteen thirty-seven, fifteen thirty-eight, fifteen forty, fifteen forty-one, fifteen forty-two, fifteen forty-three, fifteen forty-four, fifteen forty-five, R F P sixteen-ten, and sixteen-eleven.
Oh, yeah, tho, those are, are different items, I don't know if they go.
It's in the same item.
Okay.
Do we, uh, do we have a motion on item eighteen?
Aye, so move, Mr. Chairman, that we did, and, and I know that they're going to be purchasing based on the, on the budget today.
Do, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second as modified.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And just to clarify, that included the speech language of the ballot services and the parking lot?
Yes. Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on athletic stipends for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board, superintendent. On item nineteen, respectfully ask, uh, your approval for athletic stipends for the fifteen-sixteen school year. This item was presented to Personnel Committee on September first, twenty fifteen, and administration recommends approval.
Didn't we approve them already?
I also thought we had to approve them during the summer, no?
No, uh, these, uh, athletic stipends, not, not for the fifteen-sixteen school year.
Okay, I, I also felt like we'd seen them before, but, I know for sure it went to Personnel Committee.
Yes, yes.
Felt like it was some time ago.
All right, any discussion on item nineteen?
Yes.
It, it, uh, the, the listing of it is, of course, it's all, all the different coaches that we have, and their stipends and so on. I would like to see if it's possible by sport rather than alphabetically by, by coach, where each sport is, uh, separated, uh, just so we can see what each sport is, um, getting, all right? And, um, also, are, are there some coaches, perhaps, uh, somebody can answer that, uh, that have, are, are, because they're all teachers first, so, are they, they all have teaching positions, right?
That is correct, sir.
And is there a number of athletic periods that they're given, or are they all under a certain, certain number of athletic periods?
I would, I would, uh, venture to guess that I think it varies amongst coaches, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, when, when I did it. It, from year to year, it was different, you had one, sometimes you're granted two, sometimes you did it during your planning period, so. I would say it differs from sport to sport, coach to coach. I'd have to check with, uh, high school principals.
It would be interesting to see how many, um, athletic periods they have, I think.
Yes, sir. Administration does recommend approval.
I move we approve item nineteen as presented.
We do have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty, consider and take possible action on Region One Education Service Center, Personal Services Cooperative School District Commitment for Riverland City C I S D for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year.
Yes, sir, on item twenty, um, this is from the Human Resources Department, uh, we'd like to continue our service, our cooperative service of the Region One. Uh, our pricing, if you can, on your pass out, you can see it's five thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. This is based on our attendance, that was, I guess you could call it a snapshot for thirteen fourteen, which was nine thousand, nine hundred and five students. Uh, this is budgeted through my department, um, and it's, it's at over five thousand dollars, local policy requires for us to come to the board for, for approval. So I respectfully ask for permission to continue our cooperative with Region One.
Okay, um, and on page one sixty-nine, um, the, the education of services, and of course, I know, having been an educator, I know that these are essential for this, the district. Um, the only thing is, uh, on the, the, next to the last paragraph, uh, please submit the fine form to Region One by August fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, so you can, uh, begin our continued services, I, have we missed a deadline, does it matter?
I believe it doesn't, sir, but I will follow up on that, I know that, uh, we tried getting this to committee, and to the.
As I said, this, according to this, it was received on July thirty, or that's when it was mailed to us.
Yes, we received it August sixth, yes, sir.
Okay, so, it, as long as we don't miss out on anything.
I will make a note of that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Science, it was presented at the Board Services Committee, uh, on September first, so it was already after that date, right?
Do we have a motion on item twenty?
I, I move that we accept it.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. I, item twenty-one, consider and take possible action on shelter agreement between American Red Cross and Riverland City C I S D.
Yes, sir, on item twenty-one, um, I know there are some concerns, some questions, if you'd like, I can continue, or... I, I can tell a little bit about this agreement, uh, basically, American Red Cross has approached us to team up with the district, if you will, um, for shelters, and the schools listed on your pass out, which are Veterans Middle School, Gruya High School, Ringel Middle, Gruya Middle, and Ace Elementary, uh, have been surveyed and looked at, and deemed, uh, appropriate as shelters for the. have been surveyed and looked at and deemed appropriate as shelters for the American Red Cross. And this, this was presented also to our, I believe, our Finance and Facilities Committee. This agreement was forwarded to local legal, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Dion, this agreement really pretty much is standard throughout the school districts. I know you do have some questions on the terms and conditions.
Yes, I do. On the, if I can direct everybody, board members, to page one seventy-five. Just so we know that we're committing ourselves, what we're committing ourselves to, I think it's excellent that we can provide the schools as a shelter, especially when we have an emergency, but just so we know exactly what we're committing ourselves to, as I mentioned to you. Item number two, on page one seventy-five, the Red Cross will have primary responsibility for the operation, and then the third sentence there says, "The owner," which is us, "will designate a facility coordinator." That means we're committing ourselves to having a facility coordinator wherever, whatever campus is going to be used. Item number four, upon request by the Red Cross, and if such resources exist and are available, the owner, us, will make the food services, service resources to the, of the facility, including food, supplies, equipment, and food service workers available to feed the shelter occupants. So, we're committing ourselves to providing whatever food items are in that school, plus cafeteria workers or food workers to work, to be there. In item number five, upon request by the Red Cross, and if such resources exist and are available, the owner, us, will make the custodial resources, including supplies and custodial workers, workers, available to provide cleaning and sanitation services at the shelter. And then item number six, security, that they, again, we will provide, or they will coordinate with law enforcement. So, we're committing to all that, and I just want to make sure we're okay with that. That's fine, but we're committing.
Number nine says reimbursement.
Right. The reimbursement will come, we have six months to submit the expenses with receipts of the expenses, and then they'll consider reimbursement, six months later. So, I mean, I just want to make sure we're, we know exactly what we're getting into.
Did legal actually go through all that information?
Yeah, I mean, we reviewed it. It's up to the board whether they have something they want to edit or review. I mean, it's legally fine. And I think that we've, Red Cross has approached us before, and we've used our facilities as shelters before, haven't we?
That is correct.
During flooding, I believe we've done that before, during fire.
Have we, have we done it?
Yes, sir.
Which campuses have been used up to now?
I believe, well, the Ace Elementary now, which is, used to be Ringel Middle.
I know that we have.
Because I was under the understanding that it used to be the city doing that, and now it was moved to the school.
Maybe the city helped, but I know that our schools have been open before, during emergencies.
Ace Elementary, the old Ringel Middle, being used. I think an important, I'm sorry.
Was there, what was our previous agreement with them?
That's a good question, sir. When the American Red Cross approached me, we did do a little research over it, see what we could find in the record books, and we just felt that it was just appropriate to come up with something cleaner, list of campus all over, since we did have movements in campuses. Ringel Middle has now become Ace Elementary. Ringel Middle was Rio Grande City High School. I just make sure we had those names correctly, addresses. Since this agreement, really, the first, the primary reason is to make sure that it is appropriate for a shelter, and the Red Cross has deemed these facilities appropriate, primarily are gyms, those are the ones that would be used by the American Red Cross. And I think one important thing here is, if there were an emergency or a situation where they need to declare a shelter, the American Red Cross would still have to ask permission from the district, even though this agreement goes through.
But prior to this, we had no shelter agreement, or no contract?
I didn't go back very far, but we looked into it a little bit, and surveys had been done before.
Or the churches?
Yeah. Or about the churches.
I know the last emergency we had over at the JNO neighborhood, yes. I know the American Red Cross did contact superintendent, asking just for the parking lot for our, for their emergency vehicle, so.
That's right. That is correct, sir.
You did, I did ask you this, Dr. Salinas, and I believe you answered. We do have somebody who is, like, the district one, the contact person?
Historically, Mr. Science, the campus principal would become the facility coordinator, if you will. And I do have Risk Management under Student Services working on the Emergency Operations Plan, which is, should be coordinating with all our first responders in the community.
Dr. Science, if we do not have an agreement, then we can still allow our facilities to be used by American Red Cross, even without an agreement?
Good question, sir.
I mean, if it was an emergency, I think that you'd have to have an emergency board meeting and approve it, but I think I would prefer to have an agreement on file, and I think Red Cross is a legitimate organization.
I don't have any problem having an agreement, it's just that I want to make sure we know what we're committing ourselves.
Well, I think it's comfortable with reimbursement. Again, I mean, I think they're a legitimate association, and I have no problem with it.
That is correct. Alto Anito was also used as a, as a, as a shelter when we had that, the river was over, over the floods.
And also, they carry insurance. I mean, it's stated here.
Yes, that's on
They provide that, up to a million dollars.
On page one seventy-six. Also, I did a little research. I know there's a little concern on the board's part, and respectfully so. Ms. Martinez, I believe is a regional consultant or representative from American Red Cross. She did mention that on food services and custodial services, those are rare, those are rare, asked from the district. Usually, they handle that with custodial services, usually it's volunteers, and with the food, they usually have their own. And I guess that's why she mentioned that it mentions upon request from the American Red Cross, that the district could handle that situation, but she said it was
Is there a limit how much they can reimburse?
I think it's a full amount. I think whatever we submit, as long as we have proper documentation.
That is correct, yes, sir. What I've seen in the past is the head custodian and our campus principal, you know, they are the ones called, obviously, we're there to help also, and they should be documenting that very, very closely, on the hours that are put in.
And worst case scenario, it has a termination clause of thirty days, so. If we find out we don't like something about it, we can always terminate it.
But they offer insurance and indemnification, I mean. And I think during an emergency, the first place people look to are the schools for information, for shelter, for help.
That is correct.
All valleys use schools, and again, Red Cross is an organization that has been around. I've worked with them through United Way. I've never had any mis dealings with them personally. And again, they're saying they have insurance and indemnification, and as Eddie said, there's always a clause that, if for whatever reason any of the board members feel uncomfortable, there's always a termination.
Since we've worked with them in the past, I move that we approve item twenty-one as presented.
I second that.
We have a motion, and we have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salinas. Item twenty-two, consider and take possible action on request to purchase teacher party pack for the Writing Academy for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, ladies and gentlemen. At the beginning of this school year, we purchased a writing program. This particular item was presented to the Curriculum Committee. We are now asking permission to purchase a manipulatus party packs for four hundred and sixty-two packets for teachers from kinder through eighth grade, and we're also requesting permission to purchase a decision curriculum, which is only for fourth and seventh grade, uh, fourth and seventh graders. We, the total amount is $26,807. We do have the funding through Fund Two Seventy and Two Fifty-Five. We are requesting permission to purchase these packets.
Any discussion on item twenty-two?
I move that it's approved.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-three, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas and Rio Grande City CISD for the 2015-2016 school year.
This is a nonprofit organization that agrees to provide a prevention and intervention counselor free of charge to our students and our families. This is a renewal, MOU. We've had them in the, in our district for many years. We would like permission to continue with this memorandum of understanding. The only commitment with, that we have as a district is to house them at our district. We presently have them at the Twenty First Century Officers Row, and we're asking permission to continue with this memorandum. In addition to that, they will be working with our attendance officers with attendance. Any families that we refer to this particular counselor, they will be providing those services.
Any discussion on item twenty-three? Do we have a motion on item twenty-three?
I saw a move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-four, consider and take possible action on charter request for one ACE Director and one site specialist to attend the Fostering Resilience in Trauma Impacted Youth and Family Conference in Boston, Massachusetts on November ninth through the fourteenth, 2015. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Good afternoon, board members. Mr. Board President and audience present. Recommendation is to request if the ACE Director and ACE Site Specialist could attend a training in Boston, Massachusetts for traumatized students, and it is recommended by TA with a grant.
Is it paid for by a grant?
Yes, ma'am.
Or is it coming out of ours? Is it paid for by a grant?
Yes, everything with an ACE grant is from that fund now.
Do we have any more discussion on item twenty-four? Do we have a motion on item twenty-four?
I move we approve item twenty-four as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Item twenty-five, consider and take possible action on commitment from the commitment form for library services and instructional resource cooperative between Region One Education Service Center and Rio Grande City CISD for the 2015-2016 school year.
Yes, sir. Rio Grande City CISD is requesting to continue to be a member of the consortium of Region One to provide the Mac and Via eBooks, the databases for all the librarians that are presently using for the district. The funding will source will be Mr. Huelo Salinas, which is Title I. If we don't renew it, I know that maybe the deadline, like Mr. Benito Science will probably point out, has already passed, but, you know, they, they do that for a lot of the school districts through Region One. They understand that our budget doesn't come in through to September first, and then the board members, you know, keep on moving the, the board agendas further. So, even though the deadline was, has surpassed, it is, they're holding on for it.
Any discussion on item twenty-five? Do we have a motion on item twenty-five?
I saw a move. Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second by Mr. Benito. Science, do we, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-six, consider and take possible action on request to purchase computer for two CTE classrooms.
Yes, sir. Currently, the computer maintenance teacher for Rio Grande City High School is utilizing computers that are seven years old and are still running on Windows XP that is now, has been outdated. The curriculum that the teacher uses is based on Windows Seven, Linux, and the user virtualization software. And the teacher that I'm talking about is a dual enrollment teacher with STC, so the students get dual credit through STC and through their high school. Another CTE teacher inherited computers that were hand-me-downs, and this is for Gruia High School, and are also outdated. The teacher I'm talking about at Gruia High School is her second-year teaching, and she also has a dual enrollment class, which is architectural drafting from STC. This would be in compliance with House School Five, because if it's a dual enrollment class, we have to comply with what the STC requirements are, and the budget will be through CTE.
Any discussion? What does CTE stand for?
Career and Technology Education, sir. It's also known as CATE. It has a lot of acronyms.
Any discussion on item twenty-six? Do we have a motion on item twenty-six?
I saw a move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twenty-seven, consider and take possible action on study island licenses for the 2015-2016 school year.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo. This is an initiative that we've had for the past maybe eight, nine years. It's funded to Title III, and what it is, it's a software that's web-based, and it's basically for the whole district. We have a budget. The total cost for the initiative is $70,000, and again, the funding comes from the Title III grant.
Any discussion on item twenty-seven?
This item was passed, I'm sorry, it was presented at the Board Contracted Services Committee, and
I think it was.
It was. I agree that we moved, we approved.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Science. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Item twenty-eight, consider and take possible action on Odyssey Ware for High School and Chance to Be for the 2015-2016 school year.
Board President, Mr. Trigo, members of the board, we are here to ask for the approval of the Odyssey Ware, which is a software that we use at our Chance to Be Center, which we currently are housing here on the campus, and also our two high schools, inclusive the Early College High School was able to also use some of those licenses. We're asking for the approval of fifty student licenses that can be used concurrently, and you may ask, is that enough licenses? And the answer is yes, because we don't have all the students logging in at the same time. We should be okay with fifty licenses. The cost of the fifty licenses is $40,000. At the Chance to Be, currently, we have seventy-two students that are enrolled from Rio High, nine from Gruia, for a total of eighty-one students at Chance to Be. They're not all there at the same time, but Rio High, Gruia High, and Early College utilize the licenses in the afternoon when most of our students are gone, so there won't be an overlap as far as trying to share those, those fifty licenses that we're talking about. So, if we buy them in a package, it's a little bit more cost-effective than buying separate licenses for each single campus.
Any discussion on item twenty-eight? Do we have a motion on item twenty-eight?
I move we approve item twenty-eight as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, consider and take possible action on extended day program for Chance to Be.
This year, we had a different experience than we had on most years. We were having to absorb the closing of the Ignite Public Schools, so we got a lot of students from Ignite Public Schools that were, used to be our former students, so we picked up a lot of enrollment. Like I mentioned earlier, we have eighty-one students with the two high schools combined. At this time, we're taking no adult students, because we don't have an area to house them, since we can't have them in a mixed facility, so we're trying to take care just of our students. And what we're doing with the adult students, we're referring those to the Region One program, and they are taking care of those students through either the GED program or the ESL program that they're offering at that same building. What we're asking is to approve our extended day program as outlined in the attached design, and the reason we're wanting to start early is that we have too many students, and I don't know if you've heard that we've turned some students away, and we have, because we don't have the appropriate room to house that many students, so what we've done is, through the Department of Maintenance, we have taken over the top building one, and we've converted four classrooms into dual lab, where we'll be able to house fifty students at one time. I went to go check on it yesterday. They've already installed our counters, so we're hoping that we can move computers between now and Friday, and hopefully start at that facility on Monday. And we would be able to take fifty students at one time. Right now, we only have thirty-four computers, but we've ordered an additional fourteen computers, so that we can take all those students and be able to house. What we're asking is to have a morning session from eight to one, and then another session from one to six. That way, we would be able to serve a total of a hundred students at one time.
Any discussion on item twenty-nine?
Would it be the same teachers, the same people working?
It would be the same people that are there during the day. They would just stay in extended time. They work till four, so it would be like two hours for now.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion on item twenty-nine? We have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Science. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Item thirty, consider and take possible action on inter-local cooperation agreement between the Regional Day School Program for the DEF and Rio Grande City CISD for the 2015-2016 school year.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Trigo, Superintendent Schools, board members, colleagues, and everybody that's present. Special Ed Department seeks the approval of the Memorandum of Interlocal Cooperative Special Ed Department seeks the approval of the Memorandum of Inter-local Cooperative Agreement between the Regional Day School Program out of the McAllen I S D and R D C C I S D. As you know, this program has been helping River Grande City students for an indefinite amount of years. We have students that are being serviced at the school, other children are being serviced here at our schools. And funding will be, if approved, funding will be provided by our state fund, E Grant Two Twenty Four Account. We approximately pay about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand per year for this services.
Any discussion on item thirty? Do we have a motion on item thirty?
I so move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Item thirty-one, consider and take possible action on Memorandum of Understanding between South Texas College and River Grande City C I S D for our Work-Study Student Mentorship Program for the 2015-2016 school year.
This is a memorandum of understanding with the South Texas College. It's a mentorship program that would allow two mentors, two mentors at each high school to help in the career readiness center. Students will be given information, higher education, college applications on any given college, and also assistance with financial aid. We're asking permission to go into this agreement.
Any discussion on item thirty-one?
We already have something like this, huh? Is this new, or do we have it already?
No, this is brand new.
Brand new?
Brand new. This is a grant with S T C. We do have a career, um, career counselor at both high schools, but this would be mentors coming in from S T C.
It would be S T C students, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
We discussed it in curriculum.
Yes, we did.
Sounds like a great program.
Do we have a motion on item thirty-one?
I move that-
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Do it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Anything on reports? If not, it is eight twenty-one, and we'll be heading into closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point oh-seven-one. It is now ten forty. We're out of executive session. Item A, do we have a motion on item A?
I move that we approve that item as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item B, discussion on recommendations for employment to vacant position. Do we have a motion on item B?
I move that we approve the item as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion on item B, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, do we have a motion on item C?
I move that we approve item C as, as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion on item C, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item D, it was just a discussion item, there's no need for a motion. Item E, same-
No action, sorry.
No action, no action.
We need a motion?
No.
No, alright. Item, item E, the same, same issues, there's no, no action needed. Item F, consult, consultation with district legal counsel regarding potential employee litigation. Do we have a motion on item F?
I move that we approve this item as discussed with our legal counsel in executive session.
Do we have, we have a motion on item F, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item G, maybe that's a table. Do we have a motion to table?
I moved a table that I-
We have, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Science. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item H.
I move that we approve that item as discussed in executive session.
We have a, a motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. And we do want to thank all the employees that stayed till, and it's, it's late, till, till the end of the meeting. We appreciate that. Also, we just want to remind everybody that we will have our, both our varsity teams paying this Friday here at our-
Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday, and we will be having a, a tailgate at the beginning at six o'clock, and we like to see as many people out there, on Friday.
The Gruia one is the following, in two weeks against LaFeria.
Yes.
Right, we'll have a tailgate on the, on the thirteenth.
And do we have a motion for judgment?
I so move.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.